Good evening and welcome to the Heartland Township Planning Commission meeting of September 11th. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioner Hopkins, would you please take role?
Certainly. Commissioner Voight?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Grusum is absent. Commissioner Hopkins is here. Commissioner Newsom is absent. Chairperson Fox?
Here.
We have gone to the Planning Commission. We also have President Township Planner, Dave Campbell.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item four, approval of our meeting agenda.
We move to approve the meeting agenda of the Planning Commission for September 11th, 2014, as presented.
My second.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Mitchell, a second from Commissioner Murphy. Any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Next up, approval of meeting minutes.
I move to approve the meeting minutes of August 14th, 2014. Support that.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Hopkins, a second from Commissioner Voight. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. No public this evening, so we'll move past call of the public. No public hearing. And we're on to item 8A, discussion of the Zimmerman Volk's analysis of residential market potential for Heartland Township. I think the best thing to do is turn this over to our planner, David Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. The township recently received the final draft of this study created by a firm out of New Jersey called Zimmerman Volk. This is their expertise is looking at a community and analyzing their potential for new residential housing. What is the market? What are the folks who are in the market looking for? What are they willing to pay? Are they looking to buy? Are they looking to rent? And analyzing our demographic data, using their proprietary formulas and algorithms to come to a conclusion of what types of housing Heartland Township needs and could absorb over the next five to six years. The report is included in your packet. The report itself has an executive summary or a conclusion of the analysis, the first couple pages of the report. And that, as you would suspect, hits on the highlights of the report itself. And then the planning department has drafted a cover memo to go along with this report, trying to not necessarily repeat those same highlights that are already in the conclusions section of the report, but try to pull out those conclusions that may be of particular interest to this planning commission as they pertain to our upcoming work on the update to our comprehensive plan. As we discussed back in May, the planning commission will be looking to have an updated future land use plan and along with that, a updated future land use map. And we knew that this report from Zimmerman Volk would be a huge part of the conclusions and the recommendations that would be coming forth with that updated future land use plan and map. Now that we have this report, I wanted to bring it to the planning commission and have an opportunity to discuss it, answer any questions. And from there, start a very early preliminary discussion on how this could lead into the work in the next six months of creating an updated future land use plan. So the cover memo that I mentioned is dated September 4th. That was included in the planning commission's packet for this evening. And I can maybe go through and hit some of the highlights, or if we want to start with some questions or some comments. I may look to the chair to see how you want to...
Why don't you hit the highlights?
Sure. Just to be clear, this is a discussion item at this point. We're not looking for any formal action from the planning commission. This was originally, the report was originally submitted to the township as a draft. And myself and the township manager, Clerk Hopkins, and our township assessor all went through it, got back with Lori Volk of Zimmerman Volk with some questions, and she made some changes, some clarifications, a few corrections here and there in the report, and gave us the final version. So the cover memo from the planning department dated September 4th kind of goes through the background of how the board came to approve having Zimmerman Volk conduct this research and create this report. That was approved back in May. And over the next few months, Zimmerman Volk did their research, they visited the township, they did field inspections, they collected a whole lot of demographic data, they went around and looked at other new and under-construction developments around the area, Livingston County and next door in Oakland County. And then in August, we got the first draft, and then a couple weeks ago, we got this final draft that has been included in your packet. So some of the things that I guess I and the township manager and some other folks found interesting that I think are relevant particularly to the planning department and the pending future land use plan are the fact that the report finds that the township is currently underserved by rental units. And I think we suspected as much. I think we've heard that anecdotally and from some residential developers, that we don't have enough for rent apartments and rental housing here in Heartland Township. And the report confirms that, that there's a, of the market potential for the new housing in Heartland, 30% of it is for rental units. And that is because only 13% of the township's existing housing is rental. So that was a significant finding, I felt. Some of the surprises that we saw were the fact that there was a really high number, the report found, of the millennials, the younger folks, and the childless couples who would be in the market for housing in Heartland Township. And the anecdotal evidence again is that those folks are usually looking for more of an urban downtown environment, the Royal Oaks and the Birmingham's and the Ann Arbers and the Detroit areas. And, but what the report found was that those, that same segment of the market would be looking for something in Heartland Township, 45% in fact. So that was a bigger number than what I thought I might see. So that was an interesting finding. Heartland Township, sort of because of the quality of the schools, the thought has been that our primary market is families, looking to take advantage of those schools. And what the report found is that only 37% of the target market is traditional, non-traditional families with children. So I found that to be a little bit interesting. The other interesting fact I thought was that, I suspected that we would see a bigger number of the market being the empty nesters and the seniors. You know, everything we've been hearing in planning over the last 10 years or so is that we need to be planning for the aging community. All the baby boomers are getting older, they're looking to move out of the homes that they raise their families in, they, you know, they don't want to maintain these bigger houses anymore, they don't want to cut the grass anymore, and they're looking to move into the condos and the smaller ranches and things like that. But what the report finds is that it's not as big of a number, only 18% of the market, as the millennials and the childless couples. So I found that to be interesting. The report called out three specific geographic areas of the township that are most prime for residential development. And those areas, maybe two of them aren't much of a surprise, maybe one of them is. The M-59 and Pleasant Valley Fenton Roads, what we call the special planning area in our comprehensive plan, which the township just agreed to a purchase agreement on. So we do have a buyer on that, and we can talk more about who that buyer is and what they have in mind. But the report certainly called out that area of the township as being prime for residential development, and in that case, particularly the apartments and the mixed-use buildings and the townhouses. The second geographic area was along the north side of Dunham Road, just east of the Heartland Schools and the Heartland High School campus. And I, that's a new one, I think, to the township. I don't know that the township has really explored that particular area for that type of development. But what the report finds is that it may be one that we would want to take a good look at for more of the detached, single-family development. Because of its proximity to the schools, because of its proximity to the Heartland Village, that could be an area that could, and because of its nearby vicinity to township infrastructure, that that could be an area that could be a focus of detached, single-family development. And the third one is the Clyde Road and US 23 intersection, and that maybe is more apparent just given the accessibility of it being right off of a major interchange like that. And that one they called out for being the potential to support the multifamily, the apartments and the condominiums and the townhouses. Those three geographic areas are not meant to be exclusive. Those are the three that Zimmerman Volk thought were most apparent, but there are certainly other areas in the township that also have potential for residential development. And part of the job of this planning commission and ultimately the township board is identifying some of those other areas in our future land use plan and our future land use map that we're going to be working on. The report has a significant focus on mixed-use development. And part of the rationale for that is that this is the type of analysis that a developer, residential developer could ultimately take to the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, MISTDA, and look for MISTDA to partner with them on a mixed-use development. MISTDA, the priority of MISTDA right now is for these mixed-use developments and newer urbanism and walkable communities and all that good stuff that we planners like to advocate for. And having a developer having a report like this in their back pocket that they can take to MISTDA and say, "Look, the market is here, partner with us and help us develop one of these mixed-use developments," this report can be a great asset. So you will see a heavy focus of that in this report for that reason. The overall analysis that is addressed within the first couple pages of the report is that Heartland Township could support or could absorb up to 500 new dwelling units over the next five to six years, a combination of 150 rental units, 56 multifamily condominiums, 60 single-family attached condominiums, and then a range of low, mid, and high-level detached single-family housing. And so that, to me, is optimistic news, I think, is positive news, that the study finds that we could absorb that level of housing over that period of time. We've not seen that sort of development in this township in a long time, and probably not quite at that level, 100 new houses of one form or another a year. So that could be promising. And it's worth noting that that 500 total is not meant to include the house that gets built on the vacant lots off of Dunham Road here somewhere, or one of the remaining vacant lots in Heartland Estates, or some of our existing housing developments. This is meant to be 500 new dwelling units within a new residential development, not the kind of scatter shot here or there, housing throughout the township. So having these conclusions before us, I think, helps the planning commission as we move ahead with answering a couple preliminary questions, which is, one, does the existing future land use chapter of our comprehensive plan include residential designations that are consistent with the type of housing that this report says Heartland Township needs? And two, does the township's future land use map include developable properties or areas within the township that have been designated those, or have been assigned those designations so that we can say, "Yes, this is an area of the township that would best support the attached townhome or the mixed-use style development, whereas this area over here would best support the detached, single-family of this density versus that density." As you recall, back in May, the planning department created a map of the township, very preliminary map, that showed just some pink areas, some pink properties. We just chose pink because it was the most, jumps out at you, the best we felt. Areas of the township that this planning commission would maybe want to look at as areas for consideration of re-designating on the future land use map. And I've included that same map here again for reference. In conclusion, we hope that this report is kind of the jumping-off point for the update to the future land use plan, the future land use map. There is some house cleaning or some technical work the township has to do in terms of sending out the required notices to the other communities, notifying them that we are going to update our comprehensive plan, we have to send notice to our neighboring communities, to SEMCOG, to the county's planning department, to the utility companies. There's a number of things we need to do when we get to the point where we're officially kicking off this update, which will be soon. And it's also worth mentioning that this report, the township wants to get out and advertise to anyone and everyone who is in the residential development game, whether it's the relatively small local builder to the big national companies. We want to get this in the hands of everybody who's in the business of building homes and apartments and condominiums, to let them know what the market is here in Heartland Township, and be able to kind of tell them, "We have done your homework for you. Here's the type of analysis that you typically go out and spend good money on yourself. We've done a little, we've hired to have some of the work done for you, and here's the results, and they should be results that you find intriguing if you're looking to be in the residential development game." So we're working on compiling that list of who those developers are. And if anyone in the planning commission wants to throw any more names at us, I'd be happy to hear them. Like I say, big and small, local, regional, national, we want to get this to as many people as we can. That is my very brief summary of the report and what the planning department found most interesting. And I'm happy to answer questions or listen to comments and see what the planning commission thinks of this and how this factors into our upcoming work with the future land use plan.
I guess I can start?
Sure. Go ahead.
I thought it was very thorough and pretty well done. I think it was important to have done, especially for a future plan that we're going to take on here shortly. One thing that did surprise me was, is I know that everybody I talked to, and we had talked in advance about senior living areas, and none of that was mentioned really in the report, like there's going to be that much growth in that area, in this area of that group of people. So they just, you know, surprised, so kind of good thing we had it, I guess, because we would have been focusing in the wrong area, maybe.
As I mentioned, I found that surprising too. You know, that's everything we've been taught over the years, is you need to get ready. The baby boomers are going to start moving into these smaller units, and you need to be ready for that. What the report finds is that because of the housing market crash, a lot of those baby boomers now are holding on to those houses that they bought years ago and hoping that they come back in value before they're ready to sell. And so that's, the report finds that that's now kind of pushed off that shift of that population from the single family to the smaller units and the condominiums. But I was surprised by that.
Where are they going to go somewhere?
Sure.
Where are they going to go?
I think what the report's saying is they're going to hang out, they're going to stay where they are until they can get what they want for the houses that they own.
I mean, so one of the things that jumps out at me is, did we ever ask them why? You know, because if you walk around this community, and I have walked around this community talking with people, the vast majority of the people, when you ask them what drew them to Heartland, they say the schools. And for them to tell us that that's not the big driver of people interested in deciding to come to Heartland, I'd just like to know why. I mean, what did they find that is contrary to everything I would believe? Because we can sit there and we can take this and we can say, "Okay, they know everything about our community by doing this market analysis." I think that's a little maybe naive on our part to just follow them blindly on, you know, too much worth of evaluation. Now, I know they're, this is their profession and they're experts on it, and I'm not trying, but I just would like a follow-up question or two with them. You know, why is this different than everything you've heard in all the planning stuff you go to? Why is this different than what we think we know about our community? Just tell, I mean, give us that little bit extra, you know, reasoning underneath it. I know they have, you know, their own methodology that they're not willing to disclose and stuff like that, but I don't think that why would be asking them to disclose how they find that stuff out.
And I'd like to hear that answer as well. We did have an opportunity to speak with Mrs. Volk after we got the first draft, and we did ask a series of questions. I'm not sure that we asked that question that directly. What I do know is that she said she's more than open to, this is not meant to be, here's your report, thanks, and we're on to the next thing. She wants to stay engaged, and she offered as much repeatedly. So if there are questions that the creators of this report can answer better than I can, by all means, let me know what they are, and we can have that follow-up, and whether it's, you know, having her be on, I don't know, a conference call or whatever it may be with this group, or however we want to do that. But they do want to answer these kind of questions for us. Because I would agree, I was surprised by that as well. I was particularly surprised by the large number of the millennials and the childless couples that they find are in the market for housing in Heartland. That kind of goes against everything that we've heard and assumed. And so that is a shift in the way of thinking, and I think there does need to be a real strong basis for that conclusion. And I'd be happy to work on getting that answer for you.
I mean, the nice thing is that, from what I've heard and read, is what the millennials want isn't that much different than what the baby boomer wants as far as housing type. I mean, so if you target one market and you don't get them, and you end up getting the other market, you know, you haven't missed by that much, but I'd still like to know why. Need to talk to some realtors.
We want to. We want to, when I mention we want to get this in the hands of everyone, that includes the realtors. Because we had an opportunity to sit down with some developers and some real estate brokers, and I'm not sure that what they're telling us exactly meshes with what we're reading here. Now, that's not to say that one is right and one is wrong, and there's different ways to approach it. But yeah, again, I'm happy to seek better answers on some of these issues.
Dave, I would agree with Larry for the same reasons. We came to Heartland for the schools, and that's been 20 years, so it's been some time.
And I'm in the club with you, I am. I mean, I've got, yeah.
Yeah, I was in the schools last night for the parent-teacher meetings. I had heard that this freshman class is the largest freshman class. It went up 75 students or so, it's at 548 or something. So I think there's still a lot of growth there.
And there is, and I apologize for interrupting, but yeah, the data says that we're one of a few districts in Livingston County that's experiencing that kind of growth. So yes, it's not just imaginary. I mean, the growth is real, and here in particular.
Yeah, and I might not talk to as many people as Larry in the township from vast areas. I meet with people that generally have kids, because a lot of things are school-oriented, but it's, that's a huge attraction, obviously, if they, you know, to bring people here to this area. So I'm real curious also.
Yeah, the other thing is, I know the school district does projections, so they're using somebody on theirs. I wonder if they would share what their five-year projection on enrollment is and just see how that number looks. I don't know how you parallel that to houses unless they can determine how many people per house, but they spend money on that for their budgeting purposes. I wonder what theirs looks like. Depending on whether they have an upcoming bond or not, you get different numbers.
Well, we could see what they're using now, what they think the next five years looks like.
Yeah, they would be curious with this study also. I mean, we're neighbors, right? We all work together with that. So if it's going to be past the builders, I would sure that the schools would see this, right?
We want to get as many eyeballs on this as we can.
Well, many years ago, we used to say we were, Heartland was a school district and an interchange. And it's obviously grown into something more than that. So I would agree with the comments on the school district. I think that's why people came here, that's why we're here.
One thing that I learned 30 years ago living here, that the kids that grow up here can't afford to stay here. So there was some, there is some need for that. I think that there's a lot of kids that grow up here that like to stay here, but they can't afford to stay here. So if we could give them something to help them stay around, start raising their own family here, which might be what that report's talking about. But I know 30 years ago, there was a lot of guys, a lot of kids that I knew that, my son's friends and stuff, they wanted to stay, but they just couldn't afford it.
And I agree wholeheartedly with that, in the different developments that are in the area, that I know that in the lesser expensive homes, but I can just say that. I know a lot of people live in there, and a lot of people probably can't afford to come and maybe live in the country on one of the estate-type of home settings, especially when their family's so young, that, you know, that they're in their school, you know, their childbearing years. So I think that's, for sure, has to be considered, that, you know, that area of affordability.
Well, look at Millpoint. I mean, Millpoint filled up, before it was even done, they were waiting in line for the next lot, house to be built. So there's an example.
That's the neighborhood I was referring to.
Yeah, and the prices just kept on going up and up and up and up and up because they built that place. But because it was still within the range, a better market than anything else out there.
And so with some of that, there is some consistency here. When this report says we do need more of the apartments, and we do need more of the condominium and the starter homes. So there is some consistency there, I think. But I would agree that we need some more information to see how did, if I'm hearing the questions right, how did the millennials and the childless couples come out to be a bigger number than the families, traditional, non-traditional families? Because that seems to go against the trend here for the last, what, couple decades at least.
Although, you know, we haven't seen, even though we've had a lot of growth, we haven't seen all the growth that a Brighton and a Howell have seen in the last 10, 15 years either.
Correct.
And look at what they've built. You know, there's a lot of apartments, there's a lot of condominiums around. I don't know what their percentages are, but that is an area of weakness around here.
Yeah. In this analysis, I think there is a, one of the pages shows where the apartments are at. And there's a lot in the western, you know, Brighton and western towards Howell. And I think we just have the one here, Oak Point.
Right.
Yeah. So I don't know that our balance is, you know, proper. And I know people that were looking for apartments and there are not, or rentals for that matter. So it's very timely to have this done, I think.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, it's on, in the middle of the book towards the, it's in the table section, page 27, about page 30 for the asset, so. So the map that you had included, Dave, with the pink?
Yes.
For clarity? That was done in May?
Yes.
Isn't that unique that how you guys, whoever did that map, hit on some of the same areas? You know, the Clyde Road 23, east of the school, east of the high school complex, and then, you know, your area's larger for sure, but down at Pleasant Valley also.
Well, Pleasant Valley is, it was, it was kind of a no-brainer, right?
Yeah.
And I, just as a quick reminder on that, there were a few properties that we, this planning commission agreed needed to come off, and a few that needed to be added. And that was done on a revised map. What I gave to you though was the one from, that you saw already in May. So for example, some of the properties down south of Bergen, those have come off. And we added some properties up at the Clyde Road Interchange, which is consistent with some of the findings of this report. Well, I'm hearing some good questions, and keep them coming via phone calls and emails. And we are going to follow up with Lori Volk and ask these, and I will certainly get back to you with some better explanations.
Any other questions or comments on the report?
Look, I mean, not necessarily on the report. I guess not, it's more just about, you know, where do we go from here? They've identified some areas, and we've identified some areas. And I know Dave explained that we have to notify people. But, I mean, how, like specifically the Dunham Road area, which is, which is kind of, which is a change from what's, you know, planned for there right now. How would you go about, I mean, future land use map, it's not like a rezoning, it's not something you're doing that causes a change to what people are doing on their properties. Is there any special procedures you go through, stuff like that, other than just public hearings?
There is, and we are required to do a public hearing. We can certainly go beyond that in terms of gathering public input, and I think there's an obligation that we would want to reach out specifically. If we're looking at specific pieces of property, I think we want to make a point to reach out specifically to those property owners and say, "Hey, we want you to be a part of this conversation too." If you look at our future land use plan, there is, let's say, a dozen residential designations, from estate residential to mid-density residential to village residential. from estate residential to mid-density residential to village residential. And part of this process over the next six months will be to look at those designations and say, are those designations sufficient? Do we need to revise the ones we have? Do we need to add some more? Do we need to perhaps take some of those away or reformat them? And then, the second part of that discussion is what properties on our existing future land use map need to be re-designated, either with designations that we already have, or with some new designations that we want to come up with. And again, part of that could be fleshed out through public input, talking to the property owners, particularly those who have been through the development process before, and get their take on what they see to be the potential for their properties.
So going forward, do we have a plan to?
Plan for the plan.
A plan for the plan. Do we have some intentions of trying to arrange a meeting with the folks who put this analysis together?
Well, that's, I don't know necessarily that a face-to-face meeting is something that frankly fits into the budget. Whether it's something where we roll in the monitor and do a Skype thing, yeah. I mean, that's something she has expressed, she's all for. She wants to stay engaged, wants to stay involved.
I agree. I don't think you need necessarily to do a face-to-face, but I think an opportunity to ask some questions relative to how they came to some of the analysis of some of these younger folks who are single, who are looking for the walk-around community in Heartland would be interesting to understand how they came to some of that conclusion.
Do you see that?
I think some of that would automatically perpetuate, you know, some additional questions. I mean, once the conversation got going, you know, it would provoke new questions as well. So I think it would be very beneficial to kind of understand that.
Do you see that being part of a planning commission meeting?
Well, I would at least request that if such a meeting were put together, if it could be open, so that some of the planning commission, those who are available or would like to attend, I would certainly be interested.
That's create some sort of a?
Just like an open forum.
Yeah.
You think there's a challenge in getting her to do it in the evening time, or?
I don't know of any such challenge.
Because I could see it as like a work session, you know?
Yeah.
We're starting to.
Yes. Let me look into that. I think it's a great idea. Let me figure out what that looks like.
Certainly would be, certainly be helpful if we're going to make changes based upon it, or use it as part of our process, to understand what we're doing.
Absolutely.
Well, and I think we already have some good information, we're going to get some better answers, but I'm comfortable with pursuing the other people you wanted to talk to, and, you know, realtors, and senior center, and developers. I mean, there's no reason to hold that back. I mean, this is going to be a long process anyway, so the more we get started upfront, and the more information we have to start with.
Maybe along with school board representatives at the same time, if you're considering all those folks, they're part along with the school, right? They would have for sure some information for us.
Me, as far as getting this report into their hands?
Yeah, but maybe just, maybe not necessarily open forum conversation that Mike was talking about, but, well, maybe just a report in their hands would be enough, but if that's what Keith was referring to, having them together. If you're going to do an invite of those other groups you mentioned, then I would guess that, you know, some representative from the school, or superintendent or the school board would probably be for sure interested in it at the same time.
We're not talking about any, are you talking about a meeting with the consultant on this program, or just getting feedback from them? A different meeting, a different gathering of data?
Yeah, different gathering, yeah, not with a consultant, no, I think that might be too deep.
That's what I was referring to.
Too large of a.
Yeah. And I think somebody like Scott Bacon would probably be able to tell you what their projections look like. You could probably exchange information, they might be interested in what this says.
Okay. Yeah, we should definitely get this report to them.
So, I guess I will work to set up a work session or something like it, where we would have that opportunity, and if that's something we can pull together even as soon as the September 25th meeting, then I'm going to try and make that happen.
And if she can't do it in the evening, maybe it can be a late enough afternoon for those that want to attend, could attend, you know?
Sure.
Dave, what was the, when we had the joint meeting with the board several months back, what was the timeframe or deadline that came out of that for the new future land use map?
The March of next year.
Okay.
And, I mean, I want to state that deadline, the, that, with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, there is a very specific reason we want to hit that deadline, and that's because we want to be eligible for the next grant cycle with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. With the comprehensive plan, while I still want to stick to the deadlines that we established, if we can make it better for any reason by reexamining that deadline, then we can. It's not that, it doesn't have to be done by a certain date so that we're then eligible for something else. Obviously, we want this to be, this process to be of the most value we can. We'd like to get it done by the end of March.
Well, this was kind of the piece of the puzzle that we were waiting for to start getting on that, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, aside from wanting to speak with her, to get a few answers to some questions, I don't know that the answers to those questions are much going to change what we would do future land use, like, I mean, it might minor change, you know, but it would seem like we should be able to start moving ahead with that.
Yes, and I think part of that would be, let's all take a fresh look at the 2011 update to the comprehensive plan, which was a new future land use chapter and a new future land use map. We are now replacing that, we are replacing what was done in 2011, and it's probably worthwhile for all of us, myself included, to reread what that 2011 update had to say, take a fresh look at those residential designations included within it, and start thinking about, do those need to be revised, do those need to be added to, do those need to be broadened, and let's start having those conversations. Because ultimately, that's what this will be. It will be replacing that map that Keith has in front of him right now, and the future land use chapter of our comprehensive plan.
So do you in view, we have a start and an end date, are there milestones along the way that we'll have to identify that are going to keep us on track?
Yeah, that's, that's another thing that, now that we have this report, I want to establish, and soon.
Okay. Anything else on this report, or the road we are going to be traveling at this point?
It's a very thorough report, say that.
Did the planning commission get electronic copies of this, Dave?
I think we did. Yeah, well, it's, I mean, it was a packet, which was available, you have the link.
I know the board got the appendices as well. Did the planning commission get the appendices?
Based on the number of pages in your packet, the answer must be no. We gave you the body of the report, we did not give you the appendices. I'm happy to do so. The appendices, as appendices often are, are a whole lot of charts and graphs and things that, if you really want to dig deep into it, you're more than welcome to, and I'll get them to you. I did not include them with this packet.
So, I mean, the, it's hard for me to remember which things are in which one of these, because they're all about the same size. There was one part that talked about the different groups.
Yes.
And they have little names for the different groups.
Yes, so page, page 23, yes, that is in the appendices. So, in page 23, they talk about who are the different groups of people who are looking to buy a house, and they have some of them interesting names, you know, RV retirees and Nuevo money, Nuevo money. The appendix, the appendix of this report actually defines what each of those groups are, and what it says is, you know, the blue collar button downs, here's the kind of house they're looking for, here's the kind of car they drive, here's how much they spend on groceries, here's what they spend on entertainment. And yes, that is worth looking at, so I'm including a note to get you the appendix of this report.
In that, I don't know if you recall or not, but in the appendices, then does it highlight also, as this analysis does, it gives our comparison of Heartland Township to Livingston County, which makes sense, and then compare that to the United States? So are those specific targeted communities around the United States that they compare to? I'm interested in how that column for the United States came together. That's a large volume of information to narrow down to Heartland Township to comparison.
Which, for example?
It's table you're looking at? It's like table one, you know, where they start going through population, you know, the number of one or two people per household, et cetera, and they've done that a couple times, so it'll be a comparison of the township to the county, and then relative to the United States.
So, at least in table one, that's census data, that for the most part, if you wanted to dig through the census data that's available on their website, you could get. So maybe help, maybe help me by asking the question again.
Well, maybe I need to review one more time, but I thought there was a couple of tables that, once again, put a relationship of the township to the county to the US, other than that first table, but maybe I'm wrong.
I saw, I saw reference made to the US in more than one.
That's what I thought.
It's only the tables, all right. I need some time.
So I thought maybe, you know, they had, like, some specific targeted communities around the United States that they did comparisons to. You know, for a township of this size, that compared to these multiple townships, you know, to give you a comparison.
I did look through the appendix, I will acknowledge I flipped through it quickly a couple times. I'm not remembering seeing that, but let me take another look. Pure communities or comparable communities, you know, that have comparable demographics to Heartland and how they're?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, well, with a couple clicks, we give them everything that we got, and people that are really into, looking to look for that nth detail will be able to find it in the appendix if they want to.
All right, are we ready to move on? Okay, no public again, so no call of the public. Item 10, planners' report.
The, as you're aware, or most of you are aware, the planning department's zoning inspector, the gentleman who held that position up and through June of this year moved on to bigger and better things, and so we spent the last couple months advertising that position, and taking in applications, and doing phone interviews, and face-to-face interviews. The ultimate result is, we have found a candidate that myself and the township manager are prepared to recommend to the township board. It will be on the township board's agenda this Tuesday for them to approve. His name is Ron Juwala. He is a soon-to-be-retired senior captain with the City of Warren Fire Department, but he lives next door in Osceola Township, so having that local person will, I think, be an asset. And a very capable individual, I believe, and look forward to having him aboard probably later this month, and hopefully get caught up on some of these code enforcement matters that we've been doing our best to keep on top of in the absence of having someone in that position. The pending zoning ordinance amendments, we looked at three of the four pending amendments at the last planning commission meeting, the fourth being commercial agriculture, and I know I've been sending emails and memos to the members of our ordinance review committee and probably causing more confusion than anything, so I apologize for that. The hope is that if we can get some consensus of the ordinance review committee, either over email or with at least one more meeting, on the commercial agriculture component, we can bring that and the previous three all forward to the planning commission at a meeting in the very near future to set up public hearing. As far as the fundraising status signs for, like, United Way thermometer sign that we see, where they want to put a fundraiser sign on private property, the board talked about that at their September 2nd meeting as a policy decision, because we are talking about off-site signage, and the board felt that there should be a procedure for looking at those and allowing those on a somewhat limited basis. And for that reason, because that's a little bit unique, and it kind of came along midway through this amendment review process, and because it may involve amending the special event ordinance in addition to the zoning ordinance, I think we're going to put that one on its own track to review and approval. Point being, the four that I think we're going to have the planning commission hopefully set a public hearing for in the very near future is not going to include the fundraising status signs. I think that's its own animal, and will go through its own process soon thereafter. And I know Keith had some questions about the pending amendments, and I'm hopefully going to talk to him either still tonight or next week, and hopefully we're going to get the ordinance review committee's blessing to bring them forth to the full planning commission. We talked about having a joint meeting of the planning commission and the township board. The, originally, we looked at September 25th. It doesn't look like that's going to work, there's enough board members who can't make that date that it wouldn't make sense there. The, and we were trying to keep it on a planning commission date, you know, a second or fourth Thursday of a month. So then we talked about October 9th, and the conflict there is that I will be attending the annual Michigan Planning Conference, and that's up in Mackinac Island this year, so I'm not going to be able to be two places at once, so we don't think we can do October 9th. I know Clerk Hopkins mentioned the possibility of doing it on October 2nd, and I believe you're going to talk to the admin committee about that, or will. I'm not sure if that's still a possibility. And then the next possibility after that would be the next planning commission meeting in October, which would be October 23rd. So, we're still trying to herd the cats on that one, and we will certainly let you know when we know that we're zeroing in on date for that joint meeting.
Okay, Dave, would October 2nd work for, just to give them some feedback here? That would be the Thursday between our meetings.
It's a two-tiered question, does it work for this group, and then we got to figure out if it works for the township board?
Well, let's get a little, so you got at least a little feedback here.
Sure.
I'll try, we'll be out of town.
Okay.
So, of the five folks here, I'm seeing four nodding heads?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So I did mention the planning conference on October 8th, 9th, and 10th. That's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. If any planning commissioners are interested in attending that or even attending one of the days of that conference, the township does include in its budget every year education and training for the planning commission, so there would be an opportunity for the township to at least provide some of the arrangements if any planning commissioners do want to try to make it. The township board had its annual retreat yesterday, and I don't know if Clerk Hopkins wishes to speak about the outcomes of that, but that was what needed to happen before than the joint meeting with the planning commission. The board wanted to have their annual retreat and start talking about the strategic plan for 2015, and from there have the joint meeting with the planning commission so that the planning commission can be brought in on what their role will be with some of those strategic planning elements. And the only thing I was going to mention was something I already did, which is we are working toward distributing this Zimmerman-Volk study to as many relevant parties as we can, and any help you can give me identifying who some of those folks may be, I would be happy to add those to the list. So help me with those if you can, and again, the questions that we're looking to have answered from the consultant. Start thinking about what those questions are. And that's what I have on my planner's report.
All right. Thank you. Committee reports, anyone?
I did want to mention a couple of things. So you may or may not be aware, hopefully you are, that the township board did sign a purchase agreement with Mayberry Homes on property that we came to be the owners of due to sewer assessment default at the corners of M-59 and Pleasant Valley slash Fenton Roads, basically 130 acres there. Mayberry Homes is a residential developer based out of East Lansing. They're pretty big, I've been told, in that area. It's a, I don't know if complicated is the right word, but it has, I messed up some of these words, but there's an investigation phase for six months where they have a chance to do their due diligence on the property and things like that. Then there's another 12 months for their approval process where they would come to us and get approvals for what they're planning on doing, and then at the end of that time is when they would actually close on the property. So it's basically 18-month time period that it's, you know, we have a purchase agreement, but we haven't closed on the property. And when they do close on the property, they're going to close on it in phases, basically three different closings each six months after the previous one, I think it is, or one year after the first. So they're targeting the piece on the north side of 59 first, and then if all goes well, then the, that's about a third of the whole amount of acreages there, and then on the south side of 59, two other pieces. It's really one piece, but two purchases each possibly a year from each other, so...
There we go. They giving you an idea of what their intentions are with the property?
Well, not specifically. They were shown the previous plan for the special planning area, and there's been some comment, well, why don't we just do what they had planned there, but nothing more concrete than that, you know? They did seem to like that and in that development. I don't think that they're feeling that it would have as much commercial if they did do that as that one had because of the commercial area that we have down here now. I think they have some thoughts that it wouldn't necessarily be able to have that much commercial down there with this one here. They are, like I say, in the residential game, so if they, it's suspected that if they did want to do some commercial down there, that they would probably partner with somebody or sell a portion of it off to somebody that does commercial development. So be happy to answer any questions I can for you on that stuff if you think of things that come up.
If I may, if you're interested in what their product looks like not too far from here, north side of M-59, is it Town Commons?
Yeah.
In, I think that would be Howell Township at that point. Just west of, there's a shopping, commercial development anchored by a Kroger.
Right, some Michigans you're going to have.
Yeah, so, and some different uses in there, some multi-story condominiums, some denser single-family detached, and nice stuff, so if you're out that way.
The only thing that I would say about that is that wasn't their development from the beginning.
Yep.
They've come to be the owners of it now, so I don't know how reflective that is of what they would claim ownership of, but I don't know.
Larry, they're not the original developers in that, at the site?
Right, correct.
I'm familiar with them in the East Lansing market. I would think they would build something we would like. They're going to, they're going to be in some price points that we talked about tonight, unless they're going to do something different that I'm familiar with. They're going to get that young family, that type of thing.
Uniquely, a gentleman I work with lives in that development, and he had made that mention to me that he had heard that they purchased it.
Well, I mean, not to keep on the rabbit trails, but it is interesting, too, this company that did this market analysis tonight did the original market analysis for that development, and I know township manager had mentioned that the lady from this, they had some other recommendations for them down there than what they built in, and supposedly she's heard back, had heard back from that, that they wish they would have followed some of their recommendations, so. The world is a small place.
That's all good to hear whenever we can.
And then, as Dave mentioned, the board did have a strategic plan retreat meeting yesterday, and the goal of the township board is to get a two-year strategic plan, so we did this just roughly a year ago and developed a one-year strategic plan. This plan here is, or this meeting here was targeted towards developing a two-year strategic plan that we would revisit every year and basically, you know, always look two years out, be, and then be adopting a one-year, but you always have the next year kind of sitting there and reevaluating as you go forward. It's kind of hard to say specifically what the deliverables are out of that, because it's kind of a visioning session that the township manager will take the notes from and put it together into a plan with, you know, tangible things of these are something that needs to be accomplished to maybe make some of those visions happen, and that's, you know, as Dave said, that's the, why we want to have the joint meeting, you know, somewhat soon so that we can share that with the planning commission and get feedback from the planning commission if they have things they feel we missed or whatever, so. That's it for me.
Good.
Larry, I'd like to comment. This is last weekend, and I haven't done this before, but I parked at the park right here Sunday afternoon. It was about 4:00, and there were about six cars there, so the park was being used. And I got on the trail, my first time on the paved trail, and I ran the trail to the corner where Myers was, and it was probably six families or so using the trail. It was nice to see. It was well-maintained, by the way, also.
Good, good. I know I heard the very similar thing from our DPW director the other day. He says he goes out there quite often with his family and sees people using the trails back there, and he was somewhat surprised that most often when he sees people, he doesn't see people parked in the parking lot down here, that either they're parking at the Meyer parking lot and accessing it from there, or they're walking to it, and that's part of their hike or walk for the day is getting to that path as well, so. But, yeah, it's a beautiful piece of property back there, and, you know, as the Parks and Rec Committee work on their plan, it'll be exciting to see future investments and amenities added to both our parks, or all our parks, so.
I'll jump in there, too. My family and I like that, my boys love riding their bikes back there, and my wife and I like walking it, and, you know, looking at the parking lot sometimes, you wouldn't appreciate how many people are actually using it because they're either walking or riding their bikes to get there, or they're coming from Meyer, not necessarily parking in this parking lot. So the parking lot sometimes doesn't look all that full, but then you get on the trail and you pass a lot of people, and you realize how many people are taking advantage of it, so.
Good. Anything else tonight? Not if we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose nay. Motion carries. Thank you and good night.